New prototypes for redevelopment with possible mixed use and more convenient live-work-play kind of communities. That's not in our zoning ordinance today. And we're creating some graphic standards, pictures, things that will make it easier to understand the intent of that zoning ordinance. There will be a series of hearings coming up now in the late spring. We haven't set the specific dates yet. They'll probably be in May and June when we will have drafts of this new zoning ordinance and we'll be going around in the county to demonstrate how this new zoning ordinance works and to get more citizen input. Our overall goal is the hope that we'll be able to get it adopted in September or certainly by the fourth quarter of this year, the new zoning ordinance. And there will be some changes, but the changes won't be so much in the existing neighborhoods as in areas where we hope commercial redevelopment can, you know, turn around some of those shopping centers that have gone dark and create some incentive-based zoning standards there that will also be careful to take care of our neighborhoods and our water quality. So I'm going to give you my card and also a little one-page cheat sheet on that new zoning ordinance that we're working on. And if you have any questions or would like us to come out to your neighborhood and talk about how the new comprehensive plan works and how the zoning ordinance is going to address those ideas in the comprehensive plan and the future schedule for public meetings, we'll do that in your neighborhood if you'd like.
And that goes for any neighborhood. Thank you, Gary. Okay. I called on him and then I'll go over there, okay? I'm going back and forth as best I can. Yes, sir. He'll get your mic.
Hi. Hello. My question's about transportation referendum. Yeah, we're about cutting down on congestion. One of the components of the transportation referendum is the light rail between Lindbergh to Emory, Emory to Avondale. Part of that plan actually pushes light rail down Scott Boulevard, which is one of our heavier congested roads, which is going to probably take out two lanes out of Scott Boulevard from Clermont to North Decatur. That's going to back up traffic. Most of that traffic's not coming in from the Avondale side, which is the purpose of the light rail.
Yeah, I don't think the Avondale side got funded. It's not going to connect all the way to Avondale. Is that right?
Well, that's great.
Yeah. We started out with about, what, $24 billion of warrants? What was our 22 billion? And then it got whittled down to $6.14 billion on the region-wide projects. And so almost nobody got any project fully funded. So that project that you're talking about from Lindbergh will get to the Emory campus on the Clifton corridor, but won't in this phase, this referendum, get us all the way to Avondale.
Okay. Well, and my concern was more of the traffic congestion overflow because if that second phase does get funded, that traffic that comes in from Stone Mountain to Atlanta, not to Emory, is going to find an alternate route. And that alternate route is going to be one of two, DeKalb Avenue or La Vista. People are going to find a way to get downtown. They're not going to take public transportation. So when they're coming that far in. But like I said, I thank you for enlightening us on the fact that it's not funded right now, but the current plan, if funded, is going to be a nightmare for Scott Boulevard, DeKalb Avenue, and La Vista when it actually occurs.
Well, like in any referendum, there's probably something in here to like and dislike for everybody. But I'll say this about the process. It was, I was part of the roundtable for this region. Twenty-one elected officials were on that roundtable, two from each of the 10 counties that are part of the region, and the mayor of Atlanta made 21. And we had a very public and very transparent process where each of the counties nominated projects. The initial phase got us down to about 22 billion and then, I think the initial list was $22 billion worth of projects. We got that 22 billion down to 11 billion, but the penny is only going to generate about $6.14 billion on the region-wide projects, and then there's some local projects as well. So, you know, we got that 11 billion down to the 6.14. Again, to a very public, very transparent, a lot of input, and a lot of technical analysis. I mean, obviously, this is not something that elected officials alone could do. We had to have our planning and transportation staffs at the table, and there was a lot of give and take to get it down, and this is where we are. So I think arguably, there's something that almost anybody in any county could say they like or they don't like, but I think the biggest thing is we've got to do something. And I think we advanced the ball. You know, I think of it like football. If I'm on my 10-yard line, my goal is to get to the 40 and then the 50 and then to get into the other side of the field. This gets us down the field. And so hopefully, it'll be approved because it really is no alternative plan on the table. If for some reason it should fail, I think we're going to have to all roll up our sleeves and think about what we're going to do, and we're going to be set back a few more years as other areas, some of which I've already mentioned, have already passed referendums and it'll be, you know, well ahead of us at that point. So thank you for that comment. I appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Well, I'm George Quillion.
Good to see you, Mr. Quillion.
DeKalb County has enacted a new code, if I understand it, beginning January 1st this year, called the Interior Code, um, wait a minute.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Interior Code Compliance Ordinance. And the way I understand it is that the landlords will be required to pay an architect or a certified building inspector to enter each apartment, occupied and unoccupied, in an apartment complex, and fill in a report, and the landlord will have to pay, in addition to paying for that, will have to pay a $200 fee. I just wondered how that's going to be implemented. It seems to be a tremendous, I can understand the reasoning for it, but it's going to be a tremendous obligation.
Is it Dr. Quillion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Quillion. Okay. I'm going to not only let Gary address that, but Commissioner Rader is the proponent of that, and we met several times and talked about it. And if he wants to add anything to whatever, I'll let Gary talk and then you correct him, Commissioner. How's that? Okay? All right.
Better be on that.
Thank you, Mr. Quillion.
This is actually a program that's already operating in some other places like Dunwoodie and Sandy Springs and Roswell. The Apartment Owners and Managers Association is very much behind this because they see that some of our residential apartments that stock, it's kind of falling behind in some ways, and we'd like to keep the standards up, especially now since so many people have had to find apartments because of the financing problems for home purchases. So the apartment industry, we really think, is in a position to improve its quality, and we're going to try to help and follow some standards that have already been used in Sandy Springs and Roswell and Dunwoodie, and just do a similar program here in DeKalb County for our multifamily apartments. These are going to be only for the apartments of four units or more in DeKalb County, and the inspectors will be private inspectors. They won't be inspectors that work for DeKalb County, but they will all have to be pre-qualified for their interior code compliance, code skills, and they will then be hired by the apartment managers to inspect the units. As you say, the first year, we're trying to get 100% of the units inspected. In the second year and beyond, we're going to do just a re-inspection of, every five years, we'll do the whole fleet, so it'll be 20% a year. The $200 fee will apply to the first year while we're setting up the program, creating a database, training, we're actually going to do training sessions for the apartment managers so they understand how it works, how it benefits them and their tenants, and we're going to train the code inspectors. Yes, sir? Okay. Well, these are not, these are not, the question was, what happens when an unoccupied apartment hasn't been used for a year or two, doesn't pass the code, and what happens then? The code inspection process identifies any deficiency. Maybe the fire alarm batteries are out, or maybe there's something else that's a minor problem in the stairway that has to be repaired because a handrail has come off. They'll write those up and they'll be required to complete those code compliance problems before they can get their business license in the end of the year to go back and get the 100% certification of their units. So they have to follow up and do the code compliance problems that were identified by the code compliance inspection. And that will be tied to their business licenses, so we have a little leverage there to ensure that those code compliance inspections are done and the corrections are made before we sign off on that, and they'll get their business license only after they've done all those inspections. The only thing that I'll add to that is that, you know, we've got over 200,000 apartments in DeKalb County, so, and many of those apartments were developed a long time ago, and so we need to make sure that they are safe places for people to live. Apartments that are not well-maintained and don't meet these standards often not only are places where it's unsafe to live for the individuals that are living there, but they also tend to become derelict places that are, you know, dangerous places to be all over. In fact, when we had a couple of years ago, two police officers killed in an apartment complex that they were patrolling, it was a very similar circumstance to that. Officers Barker and Bryant were ambushed basically in a derelict apartment complex that many of the units were not sufficiently maintained even, you know, for people to live in them. So we've got this situation all across the county, on Buford Highway, on Canler Road, and it is something that unless we stay ahead of it, these places which were very attractive places to live perhaps a few years ago, but have declined in their maintenance, will potentially be places not only dangerous for those that live there, but for all of us. They'll be sources of crime in the community. So Sandy Springs has had great success in theirs. Our biggest issue is that we've got a much higher scale of number of apartments in DeKalb, and so that's why I'm glad that Mr. Cornell is working to make sure that this implementation goes smoothly because it is going to take some work. We're going to have to be skillful in doing it, but I think that it'll inure to everybody's benefit, including the industry, because as he mentioned, the responsible apartment owners don't like to see slums because they represent an overall lowering of the market and people therefore think multifamily is a bad thing in the community. So I think that it'll work well, but it's something that we've got to, you know, be very careful as we implement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, ma'am. Does somebody have a mic? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to be the third person to raise this issue, but I need you to understand how big of a concern this is for DeKalb County residents, is animal control. Now, instead of complaining about it, I'm going to give you my ideas on how we can make this better because we need revenue. And one of the things is, there's no regulation for these backyard breeders. We're just, all they are is causing the problem, and they are not paying any taxes. They need, there just needs to be a special license that costs a certain amount of money. There needs to be mandatory spay-neuter. If you get an animal, you've got to spay-neuter it. It can't be an option anymore. It's a burden on our finances, and it's not going to get any better because people are selling these dogs at $200, $300 a walk, and they keep breeding them, and people are not taking pet ownership seriously, and it's just flooding our system. And if we combat that with more regulation, it's going to ease the pressure off the animal control. Also, for our gentleman in blue, we are focused on speeding tickets. Why not focus on the ordinances that are being broken by businesses hand over fist, right and left? On Lawrenceville Highway intersection with Shady Lane, there is a used car dealership. An ordinance, $1,000, could be assessed on that business if a cop just turned around and looked and saw that this dog was not being properly sheltered. There's ordinance books that we could be assessing on these businesses, and they're just, they're just lying there. And that's a source of revenue that we could be tapping into, but everyone's like, oh no, I guess, I'm not sure what the issue is. But, you know, we have these ordinances on the book, and we have these fees, these penalty fees, that we could be assessing, and it's not being done. And I think that could be something that could be addressed, that could pump revenue into our system.
No, I appreciate your passion. I appreciate your ideas too, and I'm going to let our Public Safety Director, because I don't know if any of her suggestions were included in the report. He's a little bit ahead of me on my reading, so I'm trying to keep up with him, but I want to also sort of acknowledge that our public safety officials in many respects are overtaxed. I mean, so I don't want you to think that they're just saying, oh no, we don't want to go after any segment of the population that is either violating the laws or could be assessed for fines, where we've actually asked our Board of Commissioners today to enhance some of our fines, and they stepped up, or yesterday, I believe it was, and they stepped up and they did that. But even with, you know, the legislation on the books, the resources of the county are stretched in many regards, and so they work hard and they do as much as they can humanly do, but it is difficult sometimes. Director Miller, you want to add anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. CEO. To answer your specific questions, you probably already know that every animal adopted out of our shelter has been spayed or neutered. I've asked my Animal Services Director, Director Mooneyham, to make sure that we look into the possibility of getting low-cost veterinary services, including spay and neuter for all of DeKalb County residents. So that's one step to answer that particular question. As far as the ordinance on the humane care and treatment and the leash ordinance and that specific place, I was writing that down as you were speaking, so I'm sure that they're going to go out there tomorrow and inspect that property. We have an outstanding, yes, I guarantee that'll happen, we have an outstanding animal cruelty unit, and it's, even Animal Services Task Force said that our animal cruelty unit is a model for the state. So we advocate for the humane treatment of all our animals, so we're working very hard on that. And I want to thank you most of all for bringing solutions. We know the problems. We know them well. Ms. Nadya, I heard your voice for that. Thank you so very much. Solutions is what we need. We need the whole community to roll up its sleeves, just like our CEO, and dig in and help us dig our way out of this problem. So thank you very much for the solutions.
And we're committed to fixing it too. So how many other people want to talk about animal services tonight? I hear you, and I'm getting your emails too. Okay, who's next, Erica? Okay. I want to go back and forth, so let me go to this side, and then I got about three, and we got about 10 minutes, so, no, I'll stay for a few minutes if I don't get everybody in, but we'll go for the next 10 minutes. Yes, ma'am?
I wonder if you can, is it on? Is it on?
Yes, it is, yeah.
I wonder if you can speak to an issue facing several of the elementary schools and middle schools and high schools in DeKalb County that are facing cellphone towers sighting on their property. And this obviously was a decision made by the Board of Education, but at this point, this commercial endeavor goes through a permitting process through the county, and because there's, you know, citizen concern, neighborhood concern of a commercial structure like this in a residential neighborhood, I wonder if you can speak to making endeavors like this follow the same kind of permitting requirements that any commercial property would need so that the public have an opportunity to weigh in, since obviously with the situation at my own school, expressing opposition at the school level to the school board has not really been effective. And so what's the next opportunity for us to get this across?
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you for bringing that concern. My staff had a conversation with Commissioner Rader about that, so I want you to know your Commissioner is right on top of that. He's communicating with us and letting us know what's going on in his district and the issues he's concerned about. I mentioned when I started out tonight that we've got a very strong relationship with the school superintendent, and not just with the school superintendent, the Chair of the Board of Education, Eugene Walker, and the Vice Chair of the Board of Education, who's the immediate past Chair, Tom Bowen, and I all talk on a very regular basis. In fact, I spoke with the two of them this weekend. We didn't talk about that topic. We probably would have if I had had the conversation that staff had with Commissioner Rader today. What I understand is that the school system is probably, to some degree, taking advantage of a, I think it's a state law, in a way that it may not have been intended. On the county side, we do the permitting, and so after the conversation we had about it today, and then my staff came and alerted me to it, I've asked them to sit down with Planning Department. Is Planning the ones Dr. Samama does permitting? Is that, okay. So Gary wants to, I tell you, he was good. He popped up. He wants to talk to it, but I've asked him already, just late today, to look into to what degree we have to do permitting for those cellphone towers, and you sure you want to take this one? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. We are taking a look at this closely with our Law Department to make sure that we understand where our authority starts and the Board of Education stops. There are some interesting legal cases, and our Law Department is reviewing those and giving us some advice right now so that we can understand how to effectively serve the citizens' needs. We definitely are in a position that building permits would be necessary for cell towers, regardless of whether they're on the school property or in some other private location. The question is whether the powers of zoning apply to school property, and that kind of creates another set of nuances that we're looking into very carefully. But one of the things that I do want to make sure everybody understands, that many people, for a reason that I'm not a doctor, that I can't defend the health effects of telecommunications towers, but we are in a legal situation in which the federal government did a study back in the 90s and published in the 1994 Telecommunications Act, a standard that says we've now evaluated the health risk and are taking it upon ourselves, the federal government, to do that, and so that all the local governments won't have to repeat this, and we have the resources to do it thoroughly. Now that we've done the research and determined that the health effects should not be considered as a deterrent to locating the towers, we preempt the abilities of local governments to turn down a permit simply on the basis of presumed health effects. So we are going to have to look at sort of the physical characteristics of the tower and its influence on the neighborhood, apart from the fact that there may be electromagnetic waves and such, similar to what we have in our cellphones, our microwaves, and our TV sets. So, so in fact, our children, if they use a cellphone, are kind of exposing themselves to this already. That's really apart from the permitting process, and we will take on our permitting process and evaluate how we can work cooperatively, we hope, with the school board, but if necessary, impose the requirements of our local standards against how they're done, you know, so that they are done consistently.
So I just want to reiterate, we're looking at it from a legal and permitting perspective, but also engaging the school system in conversation so that when someone brings an issue related to county government to them, they pick up the phone and call me. And some of these town hall meetings, they're not able to attend all of them, but we've had school board members and the superintendent attend. They're attending about half of these meetings, and so they're getting a lot of this good feedback because of the strong collaborative relationship we have with them. So thank you for that question. We're working on it. That's the bottom line, and we're aware of it. Did you want to add something?
And I do hear you around the health effects. I, and I know there's been recent studies about that too, and I understand the limitations and what you can raise on the permitting side, but, you know, there's, the other pieces of this are just the loss of educational space on a school, the, you know, the potential impact of property values. You know, I give tours at the school that I volunteer at, and people are always asking me what's going on with that cell tower. And so if you're given the choice of where you want to live, at the school with 150-foot cell tower towering over it, or one without one, regardless of health effects, it's going to impact people's decisions, and I think that's an impact to DeKalb County as a whole and something else to think about. So just wanted to add that.
I'll talk to the Chair tomorrow and make sure he understands that.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, who's next? Oh, yes, sir. You've been patient. Erica, please. She's coming right here.
Thank you. Sit down. Am I? Yes. Thank you for being here, and my name is Roy. I live on 1384 North Decatur Road, and maybe three things that I want to point out. You mentioned about beautifying, something that pleases the eye, and that's part of my life. That's what I know. The golden section, the divine proportion, all that, yes, I'm very familiar with that. Okay, what I want to say, thank you very much for finishing the sidewalks between Oxford and Springdale. They did a good job, fantastic job. There was an accident a few months ago. Fortunately, no one was injured. And one thing that I've noticed now, they finished the sidewalk and everything, to see that side, I mean, it's good for the residents as well as for the county, you know, then the appraisal goes up and, you know, things like that. So there are two owners, the county and the residents, for the house where I live. That's the way I think of it. But the thing that I want to emphasize on the strip of the sidewalk, I had Larry Arby as well as the people next to us, and now they fix it, but they put grass. It would be nice if you asked me or asked the neighbor and everything, would you like grass, or would you like to have what you had before, you know, Larry Arby or whatever? You know, that's something, you know, goes above your services.
Well, we've done a lot to that area in terms of improvements, and I know you can see it, but we're trying to be more sensitive to that.
Another thing that I want to say, which is very important, pleasing to the eye across streets, looking at the light, to turn green, to go, and I'm in a hurry to go sometimes because of this. Those heavy wires that the companies, they lay over that, they straight, but most of them, they are, they look like parabolas, you know, they're curved and everything. They're so awful-looking. Is anything that we can tell these companies to make sure that those wires are properly powered? Because this is your part, I think. Am I right? Georgia Power, Comcast, and AT&amp;T, and all this. Over the power, the power, and sometimes they do things that they are not, they go and they run the cables under the ground and everything.
I tell you, what I've noticed, no, 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 no. Thank you, thank you very much for your question, and then I'll take one last one, but let me tell you, we have some very nice streetscape improvements along some of our major corridors like Buford Highway and Memorial Drive and Canler Road, and one of the things I've said to Ted, but what can we do about overhead wires, and those are Georgia Power wires and would really cost millions of dollars to take those down. So we're improving the areas. That area where you live is, I remember when we broke ground to do the improvements that are in place now, and they really look nice, but we'll continue to work. Okay? All right, thank you for your comments. Who's going to get the last question? Yes, ma'am, you get the last question tonight.
I'd like to go back a little bit to Rose.
Yes.
A calming thing was installed, a built more in La Vista. Now, before that was in, I know it was illegal when cars were making left turn to go around it, but many of us did, and it kept traffic moving. Now, with that block, and many, many people need to make that left turn, La Vista backs up, causing Houston Mill to back up, causing Mason Mill to back up, five days a week from 8:30 to 9:30 in the morning. Maybe a turn signal would work.
Sounds like we need to take another look at that intersection. I mean, we heard that earlier tonight. Sherry, come on. You're my friend. But I told her she gets the last question. But I'm going to be around. Okay.
This is Sherry.
Sherry helped get me in politics, so I'm going to give you the very last question.
And I don't usually speak at these things, and you know it, but what I wanted to say is I called your office, I spoke to Nina, she connected me to somebody that was probably in his office with the transportation. She put it off as a state project and told me to call somebody over there, and they said they work very closely with DeKalb County on all of this. And I'm going to ask if they put at least on this one over here at Empire, some kind of a bright strip over there because I've almost run right into it. We are not used to it being there, and I ran right, really.
Here's what I'm going to do. All right, this is Sherry Friedman, and I'm going to get your name, and we're going to contact you all and let you all know what we can do. And the one thing more than anything else you said that disturbed me is that when you call our office, I never want anybody to tell you to call somebody else. I want to make sure the date, because we've got a customer service initiative. It is important to me. Where's Claudette? Because she's going to get it. She was here. She was delivering customer service tonight, that's why. But that's Claudette leaking the back. So, in fifty-three days, okay, right, Claudette? Am I right? We on course? Okay. So, the one thing I wanna make sure, and that's gonna have a training component, because the one thing I wanna make sure you never have happen, I spent most of my days in the private sector, and we never told people to call somebody back. When we had hold of a customer, you keep hold of that customer, and you get their information, you can call them back, you know? It's like dating, you know? If you see a girl you like, guys know what I'm talking about. You see a girl you like at the dance, you know, you don't give them your number, you get their number, and you make the call. So, I'm gonna make sure that you get calls back because you let me know that, Sherry and Ms. Friedman, but you know, we're, okay. That's right. A long time, a long time.
I just wanted to say that I heard Mr. Reinhardt say he hadn't heard any complaints about that. I heard Mr. Reinhardt say that he hadn't heard any complaints about this issue with these islands, but like I said, I have called your office and talked to other.
Ted Reinhardt's a good man.
Because I don't think anything's been done.
All right. She's my friend. All right? All right. So, Ted's gonna take care of it. Listen, I'm gonna stick around for a few minutes, and so will other members of my staff. You all have been a wonderful audience tonight. Thank you so very much. Appreciate you being here.